All right, good evening everybody and welcome to the October 23rd, 2019 school committee meeting. Mrs. Burns, everyone is in attendance. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll move to our approval of items by consensus. First up, we have approval of minutes from October 9th, 2019. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Second, Mr. Bjork. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item B, we have approval of an out-of-state field trip, grade eight drama club and Wilmington High School Lamp Lighters Guild Broadway workshop, performance field trip to New Jersey, New York City, February 14th through 15th, 2020. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely. Seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That's unanimous. Any questions? I wish we'd had discussion first. We have a representative in case you have some questions.
You haven't decided yet what the show is going to be. So, I mean, I personally would love to see family opera, but you can't decide what the kids all want to go with. Something within the budget of what we've agreed on. For more than one reason, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't know, Chris. I just wanted to say that it's awesome that you guys are doing that. It's a very exciting thing.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We're looking forward to it too. So, we're hoping to get a good turnout and kind of bridge the gap between, you know, middle school and high school.
That's excellent. Have you done that before, the middle school and the high school?
No, never.
That's exciting.
So, this is our first time. So, thank you so much.
Congratulations. And thank you very much and thanks for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Yes, of course. The kids will be stoked. Take care. You too. Have a good night.
All right. Item C, we have second reading and approval of the revised school committee policies, BBAD, BBBC, BBBE, BDA, BDB, and BDBA. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Burns, second. Mr. Samaha. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item D, we have warrants, R207, L24, FS04, 05, 06, 07, 08. Motion? Mr. Bjork, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That's unanimous. And payroll ending 10/23/19. Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. There are three items under the superintendent's report this evening to bring to your attention. First off, item number A, the 2020 date for the Wilmington Unified Games has been established and that date is May the 4th with a rain date of May the 11th. And as I had the great pleasure last year to come to learn about the tremendous history and wide-scale community participation in this wonderful event, it's such a great honor for Wilmington to be a part of it. I and I know members of our staff and the community look forward to this coming up again in May. So, May 4th and May 11th again for the date for the 2020 Unified Games. Also in your packet is item number B, a memo just to bring to the attention of the committee and our community. Recently, you'll recall that we had a team of folks who participated in and attended MTSS workshop. Along those similar lines, as we try and invest in our capacity or expand our capacity for providing the best educational experience that we can for all of our students, another opportunity has come our way and that's an Inclusive Practices Institute. It is being, I guess the word would be sponsored appropriately by the Department of Education. The memo outlines a little bit more information around the institute that's actually tomorrow. And Alice Brown-Legrande, Director of Student Support Services, Leanne Ebert, our Coordinator of Special Education, Dan Faircloth, Assistant Principal at Wilmington Middle School, Ms. Peters, Principal at the High School, and also along with myself with this group will also be Charlotte King from the Wildwood. This is a pretty intensive institute that spans a number of days and contact hours together collectively, but it all is aiming for the purpose of building our capacity here in the district to implement the Department of Education's Foundations of Inclusive Practices course. And it centers around professional development. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then finally, also for informational purposes only, but again, I think it's important for our community to have a window of insight in terms of the professional development that takes place with the time that, within our calendar, the community supports, and that's upcoming very quickly on November 5th, the full day professional development in the district. This is a copy of the program that Dr. Regan put together. I want to take this opportunity and thank him, who worked extensively along with members of the Professional Development Committee to come up with the respective offerings. This is an overview of the day, the wide array of offerings with many staff, as you can see, in district that are helping provide these. The enrollment has been opened. We have, I think, well over 300 staff that have signed up for this and I think this is great. And I think it's an important piece to thank again our community for the support of this time. Professional development certainly is one of the key pathways towards improvement and this is a rich amount of time and I thought it would be nice to be able to see what it is that our staff will be spending some time on that day participating in. And that's it for superintendent's report unless you have any questions for me this evening.
Mrs. Burns, it's more of a comment. First, I have to say I really truly love the topics that are being offered for this day and I see how each of them can go back to the strategic plan that we're doing and building those foundations within our classrooms, but I also love the addition of the food truck piece. I thought that was a wonderful and creative idea to bring and something fun, I think, to bring to the staff, you know. I think that's, I just thought that was very creative.
It wasn't my idea, but it was a good idea. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies, I did forget one item. The upcoming WEF fundraiser school walk. Just to share the fact that we, the district, is again participating in that, thank you to the support and the partnership of WEF or Wilmington Education Foundation. That has been scheduled for Halloween, Thursday, October the 31st, and our schools, as has been the case in the recent past, will be participating in that, but just wanted to take the opportunity to share that with the community.
Thank you. Mr. Ragsdale?
For the inclusive practices, and I was really happy to see this in the packet this week, I think this is a great opportunity. And I appreciate that we, you know, that the people who are attending this are making that commitment to bring this kind of information and knowledge and practices back in our district. It's not easy to take a couple of days out of district, you know, you come back and you already have a pile of things that you haven't gotten to, but I think this is really worthwhile work and something that we've noted for a while is something that, you know, the increasing the inclusive practices in our classrooms is something that's an important goal for our district. I also want to echo Ms. Burns with the, I was really pleased with the range of PD offerings that were going to be given. I think that the selection of courses, it's almost too many good courses, unfortunately. I think you look at this, you're just like, ah, but I want to go to, you know, 10 of these. And you have to choose a couple of them. I think it's also great that so many of them are being presented by people in district that although we have some experts from outside the district also coming in to run these, that it's great that we have so much of this expertise already within district to deliver this PD within our staff, that it's not just going outside. The one thing that I, I don't want to call, noticed that I didn't see, so there's several technology sessions kind of in the backside on Google Classroom and Technology in the World Languages Classroom. I was surprised that there wasn't anything about general use of kind of like the Chromebooks to incorporate digital learning, teaching and learning into the classroom. That's something that I know that in the strategic plan and in our general conversations that we've talked about, that we want to make sure that all teachers can effectively incorporate the Chromebook initiative into the classrooms. And I just wanted to ask about what sort of, maybe that's sort of a separate thing outside of this, but I wanted to ask about the plans for continuing to develop teachers' ability to use that effectively.
Sure. No, it's a very good question and I think in some ways it is separate, but it isn't. So, I approached Mr. Lord when he first came on board, we talked about this and he met with his instructional technology integration specialist and they were hoping for a little bit more time to sort of do some planning to make something, to prepare a little bit more for it. So, they felt like they weren't able to sort of pull, I know it seems like they should have because there's only a couple of months, but it really was short time. Ken really didn't get in meeting with them until after school had started and, you know, that's very few amount, it's a small amount of time for us to get that together, so we weren't able to pull that together the way we wanted to this round, I guess.
But I'll just add that, you know, as you know, Mr. Lord is setting out to convene the technology committee. It is part of the strategic plan to flush out what that, what our specific direction is around providing, ensuring of capacity, professional development and such for the effective integration of technology in the classroom and provide that capacity for teachers. So, most certainly you'll hear more about this in short order.
And that brings us to new business and the first item is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award. I will turn this over to Dr. Brand.
Thank you. It's with pleasure that I have the opportunity to announce this year's winner of the MAS or the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award. The Excellence Award is intended to be given to a senior high school student who has distinguished him or herself in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. Selection is based on the following: three-year cumulative average, ranking class, and personal selection by staff and by the superintendent. And it's with great honor that I'm able to announce the fact that we have a student here, Mr. Sukhethram Sivakumar, or Sukhi as he goes by, who is a senior here at Wilmington, and he has been selected as the 2019-2020 Superintendent's Academic Excellence Award. If I may, I'll just read a little bit of information around Sukhi as his bio. His academic performance has ranked him at the top of his graduating class. He has consistently pursued rigorous courses, including a total of 10 AP courses, five of which he is taking in his senior year. Sukhi's impressive academic achievement is complemented by an extensive schedule of extracurricular activities as well. He is a member of the marching band, along with varsity track, varsity wrestling, National Honor Society, and medical careers club. He currently serves as President of the Students Against Destructive Decisions, or SAD. And beyond Wilmington High School, he has earned the rank of Eagle Scout and completed a project story in which he installed bleeding control kits in all Wilmington schools. This project, along with his many hours of volunteering at Lowell General Hospital and the Medford Rehabilitation and Nursing Center, have driven his interest in a future career in medicine. In his free time, I think this is a mistake, but in his free time, I tell you what, he enjoys his job at Extreme Craze in Woburn. Congratulations.
See that guy over there?
Go there. And then come here. Well, no, go to your mom first. You got it? Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you so much for this award. It definitely means a lot to me and the accomplishments that I've worked over for these years. It's definitely been a lot of hard work, I can tell you that. Surprisingly, I do have a lot of free time. It's kind of weird. You think you would have for a junior or a senior, but you surprisingly do. And I want to give a special thanks to my parents, who've helped me through a lot of this. They've always been there for me. And for the staff, such as Mr. Burns and Ms. Peters, they've helped a lot too. They've been really supportive. And if I've had any questions, I can always go to them. So, I just really want to thank all of you for helping me throughout my high school career. And yes, thank you.
That brings us to 6B. That is our final FY '19 financial report. Mr. Regerian?
Thank you. In front of you have our final FY '19 financial report. Total appropriation was $40,326,533. We expended $40,320,303, leaving us in the black, or a positive balance of $6,229.30. So, we closed up another year in the black. We are currently in the middle of FY '20 and believe it or not, we're working on FY '21 as we speak. That budget information from all our department heads and principals is due Friday. So, we're moving right along. This amount has been reconciled with the town and just this past week, I submitted our end-of-the-year report and I think I've mentioned to you before, in that report includes all of our spending, every penny that comes into the district and every penny that goes out of the district. So, we had another successful year and again, thank you for the support of the school committee and all the staff and going public schools.
Any questions? Mrs. Burns?
Just clarification. You said at the end of this week, you've submitted, you'll submit the annual report. Is that to the town or to Desi, or both?
At the end, middle of last week, or I'm getting the weeks mixed up. We already submitted.
Oh, you already submitted.
It goes to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. That brings us to 6C, disposal of obsolete textbooks, dictionaries at Wilmington Middle School. Dr. Brand?
Thank you. In your packet, item 6C is a memo outlining the request seeking your motion this evening to declare the attached list of textbooks and dictionaries as obsolete for disposal from the Wilmington Middle School. This is consistent in part parcel with the practice that should seek your approval for surplus. So, again, seeking your motion this evening.
Someone like to make the motion? Mr. Ragsdale?
Move to declare this list of materials obsolete.
For disposal?
To be disposed.
You okay with that?
Not obsolete and we hold on to it. And we dispose of it.
Seconded by Mrs. Burns. I don't know, you're all so excited. Mrs. Burns? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. That brings us to 6D, MCAS presentation, Dr. Regan.
Thank you. In your packet, you have the executive summary. I just want to call out two errors just to make sure that you're aware. On page 16, under the accountability data for Woburn Street, grade three, high needs, the math achievement score was typed in as five and that's not even possible. Four is the highest, so that should be a four, not a five. I apologize for that. And then on page 31, on the top table, grade three through eight, achievement district comparisons, ELA, all students. Actually, the Wilmington numbers should read 59 and 35 and six is correct, not 62 and 32. So, it's 59 and 35. I apologize for that. So, I will, as you can see from the report that I gave you, there's a lot of data here and there's 100 different ways you could cut and slice it and look at it. What I decided to do is to put it into four chunks. I'll talk a little bit about accountability and then we'll talk about achievement and then growth and then sort of takeaways or next steps. There are a lot of slides here and I'm going to go quickly and I apologize for that, but I think that's the best way to sort of just rip up Band-Aid and kind of talk and then we can go back and ask questions. Of course, you can stop me at any time too if something doesn't make sense or you need clarification. So, just to start, just like last year, the department put together accountability, an accountability system with indicators. This first slide is a repeat from what's in your packet and this just shows where schools are given scores with respect to accountability. I don't need to go over this, each line, but this again is just to give you sort of a summary of what that looks like and where scores are given. Each of those categories, they are given a score of zero through four. And on this slide on the far right, you can see that that is the scale that they used. Zero meaning decline and exceeding targets is four. These are points earned and they are reported for each of those indicators in the previous slide. They're combined, weighted, and then calculated into a percentage of possible points and they do this for the all students category, which is obviously all of the students. And then what the district, the state identifies as the lowest performing students, which is the bottom 25% of students, and that's a subgroup that they identify. And then those are averaged together to give us our overall criteria and reference target percentage, which you'll see in the executive summary. So, districts are categorized across this continuum, all the way to the right of broad comprehensive support and going up to meeting or exceeding targets. Just for simplicity's sake, it's important to note that all of our, in our all students category, in our high needs subgroups, all came out in this category here where we're making substantial progress toward targets, which means that our target percentage fell within 50 to 74. So, and that's about 65 or 66, depending on the category you're looking at. That's our actual percentage. So, that's where Wilmington fell as a district. Similarly, they categorize schools along a continuum. I'm sorry, that white is not really visible. I apologize for that. But you have about 85% of schools that are classified as not requiring assistance or intervention and another 15% of schools that are requiring assistance or intervention. Our schools fall in different places along this continuum. So, you can see here that the all students and high needs students category for Shawshene and high needs students include students with disabilities, ELL students, low-income students. So, that's a broad category there. So, for Shawshene, the all students and high needs category, and at North, the high needs students fall in the moderate progress toward targets category. At Woburn Street, both all students and high needs. At North, all students. And then both categories at the middle school and high school fall into the substantial progress towards targets. And at the West, both the all students and the high needs category fell into meeting or exceeding targets. And each school is given a target, are given targets that they need to meet based on the previous year's data. And so, based on that, this is where our schools across town fell on this continuum this year. And to sort of break that out a little bit more, I have a slide for each of the schools around accountability. And again, on the right-hand side, that scale, that will remain static over the next few slides. That's the same one that I showed you in the second or third slide with zero being declined and four meaning exceeding targets. Shawshene is really sort of an outlier this year for us, so we need to pay close attention there and see, as you can see from the chart, they declined from where they were last year in achievement categories and chronic absenteeism. There is no growth data for Shawshene students or Woburn Street students because you need two years of consecutive testing and both of those schools only test students in grade three, so they don't have growth data. So, we will watch this carefully. This is not a trend. Shawshene did not have the same makeup last year. So, we need to look at Shawshene, of course, but also see how this cohort fares next year as fourth graders and see if, you know, see where the issues lie and where we need to provide additional targeted supports. I should mention that there is a data cycle that we're doing now at the elementary school with principals that actually continues tomorrow and this is some of the, these are some of the data points that we're looking at with individual principals to say, all right, let's take a deeper dive into why we have zeros in all these categories and who are the students and how can we provide them with targeted intervention. So, that's some of the work we'll be doing this year. I'll talk a little bit later in the slides. Same table for Woburn Street. You can see that our high needs students in math achievement exceeded targets and they met their targets in, for all students category for both ELA and chronic absenteeism. That is an indicator that is a part of the new accountability system, came in play last year. A student is considered chronically absent if he or she misses 10% of their days in attendance. So, it's not, you know, it's 180 school days, it's not 18 days for every student. If that student enrolls on day 20, then it's obviously, it's 20% of 160 days. So, that's how that is categorized. This is an ongoing issue that we are working with principals around. Some of our chronic absenteeism numbers we're finding are actually have to do with local coding. So, for example, if a student goes out for a 45-day assessment for special education, that student might inadvertently be marked absent when their code should be what we call constructively present, which then wouldn't count against our chronic absenteeism. So, it's, some of that is clerical that we need to make sure that we catch. We did better this year than last year, but we still have some work to do in that area. These are the numbers for the North. Again, I want to look very carefully at what we have declined. The West, exceeding targets in math and science for high needs and in science for all students. Our science scores were better than I expected and this was the year before we implemented the new science program, so I can only imagine what it will look like next year once we have the science curriculum in place. But students in general across the district did well there. You can see the chronic absenteeism declining in both categories for the West. And again, that can be a very small number of students that creates this flag for that particular indicator. Last year, again, around chronic absenteeism, we did it and gave a list of students to principals in essence, sort of dig deep and give us back information on that. So, that's what we will do again this year to make sure that our coding is correct. The middle school, as you can see, really performed well last year. We have students exceeding targets in both all students and high needs categories for all three subject areas. The middle school numbers did not quite look like this last year, so you can see that they're, they had appropriate targets set and then exceeded those. So, that's really something to be proud of. It's a highlight, I think, of our accountability report is this building in particular. And then at the high school, you can see there's additional indicators. In addition to achievement, growth, and chronic absenteeism, high schools are given scores for advanced coursework completion for juniors and seniors, and they also have indicators around dropout and graduation rate. So, that extended graduation rate that you see there, those are students that don't make it to the diploma after four years, but they persist and they continue, they come back in year five or perhaps to doing some other program that's still tied at school and they're heading towards a diploma after an additional year. So, those are our high school numbers. Anything on accountability that I can answer before moving on to achievement? Okay, so the next few slides focus on our achievement levels and each will have a slide for all students and then high needs, so you'll see that pattern repeating. This is grade three, ELA, all students are exceeding and meeting expectations target, which is really what you, what you're shooting for, is up six points from, at the Woburn Street, up six points from 2018 and 15 points higher than the state average. So, what you're seeing here is the bar graph, the far left is Shawshene, the middle is Woburn Street, and the orange is the state. And with respect to math, exceeds a meeting is higher than the state, nine points higher at the Shawshene and eight points higher than the state at Woburn Street. Our high needs subgroup is a hard trend to identify at the Shawshene. In terms of exceeding and meeting expectations, way back in 2017, we only had 15% of students in the high needs subgroup meeting or exceeding. 2018, that more than doubled to 32% and this year, we've set back to 27%. So, we need to keep an eye on these numbers again. There are, there are programs at the Shawshene that have students with some needs that are a little more significant than perhaps at the Woburn Street and we don't know if that, you know, we have to see how that plays into these numbers as well. as well. So it's kind of hard, I think, to compare the two schools in this particular category. But nonetheless, they are together on the slide here. And Woburn Street exceeds and meeting is 12 points higher than the state average. And both schools are really aligned with the state with respect to exceeding and meeting expectations in math. For grade four at the North and the West, both schools above the state average for exceeding and meeting expectations in ELA. The North, I'll point out, there were zero, 0% of students not meeting expectations. So that's, that's an excellent data point there for the North. In terms of math, both schools had strong numbers for meeting and exceeding, 69% or 19 points above the state average for both schools, both scoring at 69%. And a very low percentage of students not meeting when compared to the state average. Two and three, or two and five, I think, respectively. And our high needs subgroup, 20 points above the state average, North and ELA. And as I said on the previous slide, 0% not meeting expectations, which is excellent. In math, again, close to the state average for meeting and exceeding and nicely below the state average for not meeting. 15 points below the state average for the North and 10 points below for the West in terms of students not meeting expectations. Once we get to grade five, we have three tests that are administered, ELA, math, and science. For ELA at the North, we were just above the state average, just by two points. At the West, in grade five, we were below the state average by eight points. So this cohort in particular, this cohort at the West has performed below state average in this category for three consecutive years. So we've, I looked back when I saw that number there just to see if there was a trend with that particular group of students. And so in fourth grade and third grade, when they were at the Shawshene, they were below the state average there, too. The North and West math outperformed the state in the meeting and exceeding categories at the North by 28 points and 27 points at the West.
So Brian, did you say that the ELA cohort before was the one that was okay?
Yeah, so that's where, right. I'm sorry, I should say specifically that cohort was an ELA that they performed below the state average, yeah. And our science numbers, really nothing sort of stands out. It's very close to sort of what you're seeing at the state as well. And we're excited about the new science program, so we're, we're hoping to see some numbers change there as well. Our high needs category for grade five, both at the North and West, the math outperformed the state in meeting and exceeding, 15 points higher than the state at the North, 12 points higher than the state average at the West, and sort of on par with state average in science and ELA. With the West falling below, again, that's that same, same cohort falling, falling below the state average by seven points in ELA. We move to the middle school, grade six. Outperformed the state for both ELA by 16 points in math, by 19 points. This is the all student category. And our high needs students slightly below the state average in ELA by eight points and above the state average in math by 10 points. We've gone to grade seven. Again, above state average for both, ELA by nine points and math by 15 points. Only all students category in the high needs, slightly below state average for ELA at five points and above state average in math by four points for high needs in grade seven. Similar to grade five, we have three tests for eighth graders. We had science back in. At the middle school, the eighth grade outperformed the state average in all three disciplines, 17 points higher in ELA, a 25-point increase over the state average in math and 12 points higher than the state average in science. So the all students data for grade eight, looking very strong. Our high needs subgroup for grade eight, also outperforming the state in all disciplines, 13 points in ELA, three points higher in math, and five points higher in science. And at the high school, again, three tests, outperforming the state in all disciplines. High school sophomores last year were 17 points higher than the state in ELA, 14 points higher in math, and 13 points higher than the state in science. We have a nice trend that we're seeing in science at the high school in particular. In 2017, it was 78% in the advanced and proficient category, 82% in 2018, and 87% in 2019. And you'll note that the science is still listed as advanced and proficient, needs improvement and failing. That is the legacy MCAS. It's not the electronic version, the, that the other students are taking right now. So that is sort of the one test that remains in the old format. And that's one of the reasons why you'll see in the executive summary that I was able to give you multiple years of science data, but we weren't able to do that in ELA and math and at the high school level because there's no comparing, you can't compare the, the new MCAS to the old in that way, so. Our high needs subgroup, again, higher than state averages in all three disciplines. There was an unusually high number of students in the failing category for science at 18%. And that's up from 6% in 2018 and 13% in 2017. Those are different cohorts of students, so that's a hard sort of comparison to make, but just, it's, it's one trend that we sort of watch. But this, that, that does stick out just a little bit. And the other place, just to give you some visuals, I thought it's important to, you know, what, what, what we're normally looking at is sort of how grade four does one year and how that grade four does the next year, different cohorts of kids. When we're talking about growth, we're talking about the growth of a cohort of, of children. So these, these scatter charts here, again, the colors aren't showing. I should use something a little bolder, I think. But in each of these squares, you want to be, you want the red, the circular ball to be in the upper right-hand quadrant. That's why they attempted to be shaded a little bit. So they are slightly pinker, but not dark enough. So just to give you that visual, I added the crosses and colored the top right, just so you can see where we are. And then the labels tell you how many students, what their percentage of meeting and exceeding, which is the, the left of the axes. And then on the bottom, you have the median student growth percentile. And I'm noticing here on the chart, it says median, and on my label, it says mean. I'll have to, I'm pretty sure it's, the number I have there is the mean, not the median. So here's grade four. You can see that the dot sizes are, these charts come from the state. They're based on the number of students in the cohort. So because there's under 100 students at the North, they got the tiny dot. And the West gets over with 104 students, so they go to the next size. That's what that represents. But same idea, you can see where they fall on the, on the chart. In math, we're, we're firmly in the higher growth and higher achievement quadrant. And we're approaching that nicely in ELA. In grade five, a little bit different story in terms of ELA in particular. This is something that we're working very hard on, in particular with our coaches from TLA. As you probably know, we contract with teaching learning associates. They come in, they're working with our teachers around the workshop model. Grade five is an area that we are focusing heavily on, particularly at the West, to sort of move more firmly in the direction of being really confident with the workshop model there. But it, it bears out, I think, in, in the data in terms of how students are, are growing with respect to, to reading and writing. And you can see a stark difference around growth between the ELA and the math at, at grade five. Our grade six numbers, again, while we're happy with how the middle school performed, we'd like to see, we'd like to see some higher growth with this particular group. So this is, this is how our grade six students grew from grades five up to grade six. And for grade seven, and grade eight, and at the high school. And these growth scores are for all students. They're not divided out by any subgroups. This is all them together. And just a couple of quick slides. Last year, we used our DART districts, which are districts that the state helps us identify based on demographics. So this is a slightly different list than we had last year. It changes from year to year depending on how schools perform. So there are 10 schools, in addition to Wilmington makes, Wilmington makes 11. So there are 10 additional schools that the state gives us as, these are the schools you should compare yourself to. They have similar demographics, they have a similar scoring pattern, similar enrollment, similar percentage of students that are ELL students, similar percentage of students with disabilities, et cetera. So you can see here, with respect to, on the, on the left, that's ELA, all students grades three through eight together. And we are below nine of the 10 DART districts with respect to ELA, grades three through eight. And we're fourth from the top among our DART districts with respect to math. And these numbers are, as it says, students that are meeting or exceeding expectations. And looking at high school, ELA, grade 10. And we're fifth from the talk, top among our DART districts with respect to students meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. And ninth among the 11 DART districts for math. And just to sort of bring it all back, just some of the things that you should be aware that we are doing. I talked a little bit about the data cycles. We have scheduled four of those this year. We had planning meetings with individual principals last week. And tomorrow, there will be meetings with principals in groups. We have the North Side principals meeting in the morning, the West Side principals meeting in the afternoon, where we will use the information we discussed at the planning meeting to come up with specific action items that we will focus on for this coming data cycle. So we're looking at BASS data, we're looking at math data, we're looking at AIM SWAP data for kindergarten, and we're looking at MCAS scores. And we're trying to identify those students that are, particularly those that are currently not receiving any interventions and deciding which interventions we can put into place. And then we will have the cycle repeat coming December, and we'll look at those same students again and see exactly what has changed. And if something hasn't changed, we'll change that intervention. We'll also, the students that are receiving interventions, we will look at them in the December data cycle to see, okay, they've, they're, they have an intervention in place already. Again, are there, is there any progress being made? Do we need to make adjustments to those interventions? So we'll be working on that this year, October, December, April, October, December, April, and June. Our extended leadership team has started to focus on supervision and evaluation, looking at the main question of, you know, what should evaluators look for and what kinds of feedback should they give to teachers when they are in classrooms doing observations? We discussed that at our summer retreat day, and then we had a secondary conversation at our first ELT school year meeting, which happened in early October. So this is a topic that we continue to come back to. But I think that this is, this is another important area that we need to stress as a leadership team, giving feedback to teachers that's really specific to instruction, I think is going to help us with our, our tier one work overall. And then chronic absenteeism, as I mentioned, that continues to be a focus in working with folks in, in the different buildings to make sure that we are doing the right things around attendance and coding and, and that they're doing the work they need to do, which of course they are. But, you know, continuing to work with families that are, you know, having children that are not coming to school and, and what, what kinds of things can we do to, to support those kids and get them here and get them educated? So that will be something we'll continue to focus on. The middle school and elementary schedules are something that we will be looking at over the course of the next couple of years. This is something that's touched upon in the strategic plan. You know, we, so much of what we do with respect to interventions is tied up in the schedule. And it's really, in some ways, boxes us out from doing things that we'd like to do, and that's just not acceptable. So I'm excited about Mr. Phillips's sort of approach to thinking around the schedule. And he's, he's of that same mindset that we really, you know, at the middle school in particular, we can't, you know, continue to say, well, the schedule doesn't allow that, right? So we need to take a different position, which is what the kids need, and then build a schedule around that that supports kids. So the North is trying a new model this year, a slightly different schedule that they're sort of piloting, and we'll use some of that information as we go forward to talk about schedules overall. The elementary schedule work is not scheduled to start until the second year of the strategic plan, but that, what I envision is that we will have a joint committee that will look at all six elementary buildings together, using data like we will get from the North, for example, who have tried something new this year. But it makes sense for us to unify what's happening across all six buildings, at least in a way that, you know, each level has similar schedules so they can have similar interventions for kids. So that's, that's a, it's a big lift, but it's an important one that we'll be, we'll be looking at. And then just continuing to look at inclusion, as, as Dr. Brand mentioned, we're, you know, attending institutes and workshops, and this is just, this is going to be an ongoing process. It's a large part of the, of the strategic plan, looking at our, our inclusionary practices and, and co-teaching and, and other elements like that. Professional development, we participated in the MTSS Institute back in October. Dr. Brand mentioned the Inclusive Practices Institute. Sure, there's going to be much more to come around that. And just respect, with respect to curriculum and instruction, continuing our push for implementation of readers workshop, writers workshop, and science. There's a lot, as you know, I've said it before, going on at the elementary level. We continue to get support from TLA for readers and writers. We have multiple grades that are, that are officially implementing writers workshop this year. We have a couple of grades that are scheduled for next year, but some of those teachers are dabbling in it this year because they're confident enough to do it and they want to try. But next year, we will have all of the elementary grades fully implementing writers workshop along with readers workshop. Our focus professional development with TLA will be on conferring in, which is an element of the writers workshop. In January, TLA will provide a choice structure for our teachers around different components of the workshop model. So we think teachers will like this. We give them the opportunity to look at the mini lesson or look at conferring or look at book groups or look at read alouds, you know, things that they feel like they'd like to, you know, get, get better at. So we're working on that for our January CIT day. Lisa Murphy, principals and I are going to spend the year doing a deep dive into sort of our math instruction, taking a look at, you know, we have envisioned math, K5. How is that curriculum being delivered? What are our strengths? Where are our areas for improvement there? And then make a plan for how we might move forward with that going forward. And at the secondary level, just one example, Mia Parvayian is working with her teachers, you know, really looking deeply at how the standards are aligned to what's being taught and how that's connecting with the next generation MCAS. She's very in tune with that, as are her teachers, and she's worked hard on that last year. Now that we have data from that assessment, she's using that in item analysis from those assessments to, to make some decisions going forward with her teachers. So there's actually a WU that's already up and running at the secondary level in ELA around that piece. I mean, there's obviously 100 things that are going on in the district as well. I just tried to come up with a few that might be of interest. Like I said, that's a lot, and I just flipped through 30 slides, but I, I sat with Dr. Brand and tried and cut it in half and we couldn't. So it's just, it's a lot, and there's, maybe other ways you'd like to see the data, which I'm happy to, you know, create different chart stables, graphs for you and get them to you. So that's my presentation.
Excellent, thank you. Questions? Mrs. Burns?
Dr. Wigg, and quick question. Knowing that this is a, a new way of presenting the data, how, because I'm, I'm struggling, I, I, well, granted, I'm, I guess I'm, can't teach an old, darkened trick. So I'm trying to learn how they're reporting out the MCAS data now since they switched over to their, the reporting tool from last year, right? Last year was the first time. So I just find it kind of, I guess it's difficult, like more complex into trying to decipher our growth and the, the to decipher our growth and the, the areas of focus without, without the interpretation, you know, without you interpreting it for me. I'm just trying, and, and this is just cavalier, is it, is there, just trying to broaden my understanding, is there a reason, does this help break down that growth and target those areas? I mean, the previous way that they presented the results, and I guess we can't go backwards, gave kind of clear picture of, okay, this group of students, you know, it was an easier comparison, it was apples to apples, number of students who hit the targets, or, you know, wherever they fell. With the way that they're reporting now, it's, I just, I don't know, it's a little less structured for me. It's not as black and white, and I'm not sure, I'm really not sure how to interpret this other than without, you know, your guidance into what it, you know, the standards.
Yeah. I mean, the growth model has largely remained the same, so that's, I mean, that could be something that perhaps I could give more information on. So, you could, you know, we could, we could take those bouncing balls on those charts and use that data in different ways to show you how those cohorts have performed over time. As I started to sort of put notes together to what to say, you know, you say, okay, well, gee, would it be helpful if I said, here's how the eighth grade cohort has performed since third grade? Well, that's another, you know, ten slides in twenty minutes, you know, so, but not that it's not important. So, it's, it's finding sort of what it is that helps the public sort of understand where we're at. You know, the three-year trend, again, that's different cohorts of students, so is that that valuable? I don't know. I mean, it's.
But it's difficult to appear with the new reporting tools to what was previously used, since we're only in the second year of it. Do you?
Well, that, that piece of it applies to the high school achievement data for ELA and math, really, because we still, we, we have been on the next generation MCAS for the lower grades for at least, you know, three, they're phasing it in, so we have at least three years of data.
Okay.
Around that. And some of that is in the executive summary, because I did give you the three-year trends where I could.
Right.
But the, you know, there are many different angles we can take to, to do this. I mean, I think if you want to look at how students are performing from year to year, those same students.
Right.
And then, I think that SGP is the, that, that growth percentile is the one that you want to look at.
So, that'll, that, that would remain the same between?
Yes, yeah. And, and I didn't, in the executive summary, I didn't put, you know, which is a note I can make to add that, you know, we can, we can give you a chart that shows, you know, how that cohort has grown more than, you know, the, the growth number is showing you how they grew from last year to this year, or the previous year to the, to 2019. We have that, we have a growth score for those kids going back, you know, so I could create something that shows how those kids have grown over multiple years. I, I guess I feel like that's one of the more important indicators to look at than the achievement, because it's, achievement, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a slightly different test every year, and if you're looking at year-to-year comparisons for, say, grade four, it's two different groups of kids, and so it's imperfect in that sense.
Okay.
I mean, the biggest changes, I think, really came under the accountability piece, and that's, that was confusing before. I think it's, it still is.
Mr. Rexton.
So, kind of adding on to that, the, the accountability is really what's new, the, the new accountability system, two, two years old now with, but that's, that's what, when they got rid of all the levels, and there are all these indicators, and then the weighting and the average, that gets very complex. But the basic MCAS reporting is really the same that it's always been. The, the categories, the achievement levels changed names, so we don't have the proficient and advanced area of meeting and exceeding expectations. But you still have the, the four achievement levels, you still have the percent of students that fall into them, you have average scaled scores, and we have the same growth model. So, the, as far as the basic.
I think it's the way, as it was presented over the, the past several years, and then, this, the way it was presented here, and then, what I see on the website, is slightly, is different, so where I could see how many students, the student scored, and then you get the percentage, and, you know, and I could compare it with the previous result. You know, it was apples to apples. It's a different delivery of, a different reporting of that information, and I guess I'm just trying to, trying to organize, I'm just trying to organize it better, to be able to see that, those comparisons over previous years. And so, and maybe it's just, because it's new, I'm just not, you know.
And it depends on the test, because for, for ELA and math, in grades three through eight, we've had the next generation MCAS for three years. So, that's been, you can, you can follow that trend as far as the scores and the, and the achievement levels. But the science just changed over last year.
Right.
And the grade ten just changed over last year, so you can't follow the trends as far back, and it's very, very disjointed.
Right.
I think growth is, is definitely one of the important things to.
Thank you.
To be focusing on here. Generally, in the, you sort of think of like sixty, above sixty percent is kind of high growth, and between fortieth and sixtieth is moderate growth, and under forty is low growth. And I think the reason that, that growth is so important, and that is in a couple areas a concern to me, is that growth is not just a measure of kind of how you improved year over year, it's a measure of how you did relative to your academic peers, which is students who scored like you did the year before. So, it's not just about, I did this this year, and then the next year, did I go up a couple of points or down a couple of points? It's looking at students who scored the same that you did last year, and looking how all of those students did this year, and where did you fall within that group? So, when you're seeing low growth, you're seeing students who have not gone as far as other students who were academically similar to them, at least based on their test scores, from the prior year. So, you want to be thinking about like, you know, where did they kind of lose, is there learning that they're losing along the way, that other students that were similar to them in the previous year were, were not showing this year? And so, that's why I think that, that we definitely want to focus on that. The achievement picture is much more mixed. It's a lot harder to detect trends in what's happening in the achievement. Like, you know, Shawshing had a, had a decent jump from seventeen to eighteen for their ELA scaled score, it was the average scaled score of four ninety-eight, and then went up six points to five oh four. That's part of why it came down, it just dropped to five oh three point four. So, we're actually still about five average scaled score points above where we were in two thousand seventeen in ELA and Shawshing. So, a lot of it just depends also on your frame of reference. Are you just doing a year-over-year comparison, or are you kind of looking at a trend going back three years? So, it's, it's a little harder to pick out the trends in the achievement, but I think the, the growth is something that we want to pay close attention to.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Samaha?
As, as I look at it, I, I, I'm looking at the, the additional indicators, right? So, I'm looking at chronic absenteeism, and the difference between how the middle school improved versus the high school, in terms of that number, the zero through four number, and the middle school, you know, was, was a four, and the high school, I think, was a, was a one, so they sort of stayed, stayed the same. And so, I'm just thinking, you know, you know, are there, is there something in particular that the middle school did to change their chronic absenteeism? And maybe what can that be transferred, how can that be transferred up to the high school? I mean, did they, was there some intervention that was incredibly successful?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think what you're raising is a good point, like, so when we're talking about chronic absenteeism, I think that if we find a school that has had some success, we obviously want to ask those questions, to see if it's something that is, you know, that we could recreate in other buildings. Coming from the high school world myself, I know that this, this is a particularly challenging indicator as kids get older. We all know the, of sort of what happens to that population as they get older, and it, it just, it becomes a, a much slippier, slippery, more slippery number to sort of grab onto, because you've got kids that aren't coming to school for dozens of reasons, and, I mean, that's not to say you give up on that, but I think, you know, from what I know from last year, when we gave the list of students to the APs at the high school, like, they did a great job tracking where each individual student was on that list, because we knew who the kids were that were chronically absent, we identified them. And Mr. Phillips and Mr. Miranda were, you know, I mean, they could tell me exactly the story behind every one of those kids, which was good, you know, to note that, you know, no one was like, well, I'm not really sure, right? We know exactly why student A has been missing for sixteen days and student B for twenty days, so. The difficulty was, what do you do with, with that reason? Because when it's a, a significant mental health issue, and it's not a hospitalization, and they're not accepting tutoring, or, you know, a tragic issue in the family, or, you know, whatever, students will run away. I mean, we have, you know, these things are happening, so. I felt good last year when we gave the numbers out, that the administration could, you know, I wasn't surprised, but it's nice to know that they know the story behind each of these kids. Now, it's a matter of how do we target our resources to get them there? And I will be honest, it seems silly, but coding is a, is a big deal, too. We shouldn't be losing points because we're not making, we're not marking kids the right way. And that's, that's something that we could do simp, you know, in a simple way by just making sure every school has a, has the list, and they know, you know, because Aspen has so many codes, and making sure that the secretaries that are doing attendance or whoever are marking them correctly.
About chronic absenteeism, if, I'm always confused by the excused and unexcused. And so, if you bring a doctor's note in, does that still count?
Yes.
As a.
As a chronic, yep.
Okay. So, either way.
Excused or unexcused, it doesn't matter.
So, what, but now, a student can miss quite a bit of time for a reason, but have it be, but not have it count?
Yeah.
What would, I guess, what would those reasons be?
So, for example, so if a student was hospitalized, medical, mental health, doesn't matter, students hospitalized for four weeks, the school provides tutoring for that student, we can code that student as chronically, sorry, chronically, I got that on my brain, as constructively present, which means we are providing that student with services outside of school, and then it doesn't count as absent that way. They're still, you know, they're considered, they are absent from school, but chronically present. But if a student has mono and misses five days of school over a couple of weeks because he or she's struggling with that, that, that counts as five days, they're absent, even though it's a medical excuse that way.
So, as far as children bringing in notes?
Yeah, so if there's the local policy, so that, you know, that satisfies our attendance policies locally, but when the state looks at a, at a student being absent, it's absent or present, one or the other.
Got it. Thank you. Anything else? Mrs. Burns?
Just a quick follow. As the district looks to, to carry on the work that you just talked about, the, under your analysis, how much of this data, I, I'm sure, I know this is a data point to use in, in trying to figure out whether, you know, where to target, what to focus, but do you also take into consideration the other assessments that transpire over the, the course of the year in, in honing those areas? Because I, historically, and I still feel this way, I, I don't think MCAS is a really great indicator with regards to the diversity of our learners and how students learn, and I, so I feel really it is a one-note assessment tool that really doesn't, you know, really, trying to verbalize it, doesn't really give enough clarity to those, what students really know, but who may produce it, or, you know, learn in a different way. So, I just didn't know how the other assessments that, that do go on quarterly go into the, the work that you'll be doing over this year and, and the staff.
In particular, the elementary level, where we, we know what those assessments are, the common interim assessments, like the BASS data, like our math benchmark assessments, we use all of that almost more so than we do the MCAS. The MCAS is sort of a, to be morbid, but it's more of a, sort of an autopsy, it's, it's over, it's done, it's last year. It's an important data point, but it's not as, it's not living the way someone's BASS assessment might be, say, in October, right? Because now, I have that right now, and I have eight months left of school, and I know I can do X, try X, Y, and Z before the next assessment, which might happen in December, right? So, MCAS doesn't give us that. It does help color the picture, though, so, but we use it in that piece. At the secondary level, we need to, you know, we have this, this data cycle we're doing at the elementary level. This year's goal is to sort of just determine what those assessments are at the secondary level? Where do we have common assessments? What can we use? I mean, at the high school, you have, you know, mid-year and final exams, things, things of that nature. You know, what, what are those, so that we can add those to our arsenal of assessments that we can use to kind of paint the whole picture for the students? But, but yes, we use a variety of, of that data.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Rexton.
You had a lot of slides covering the high needs group in, for, for their performance. High needs can look a lot different district to district.
Sure.
Because it's composed, I mean, depends on the, on the mix of students, so you have your English language, rather, English learners, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. Can you roughly pinpoint the, kind of the ratio here for, I, I'm assuming that it's mostly students with disabilities for Wilmington, since we don't have many EL students.
Correct. Yeah, so I, I would say it's, it's, it's mostly students with disabilities. The next largest group would be low-income students. ELs, and this is one of the reasons why I try and use the high needs group, because some of these other subgroups don't exist, that I couldn't give you their data, they don't report out.
They don't have twenty, twenty students.
They don't have twenty students, so, and a tested grade for EL. We don't, in the, last year, I believe we fell below the threshold for students with disabilities in at least one of the grades, so that's why I use the catch-all. But yeah, so it is, with our data, you're looking at mostly students with disabilities and low-income students.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Mr. Rexton.
It's natural, I think, for us to, you know, focus on the areas where we see like, oh, we want to get in there and figure out what's happening here, and what, what, you know, what, what we want to kind of improve and focus on the, you know, the spots where we say we need some interventions here. But I think there's a lot of good news in these results. And our, especially if you also look year over year, that our accountability percentage last year was fifty-six percent, and it's up seventy-one percent for this year. The, it's a cumulative measure, that's another thing, that now that we have two years of accountability data, so what you actually see, like in the official website, is sixty-five percent, because it's a weighted sixty percent this year and forty percent last year. But there, we have a pretty substantial increase in the accountability character, we're a lot closer to meeting targets. And seventy-one percent is pretty close to seventy-five percent where you actually get that meeting, meeting targets. So, there's a lot, I think, a lot of really good news in here, and a lot of, a lot of good work being done.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our school improvement plan and the NIESC report, Wilmington High School. Ms. Peters.
Starting with my school improvement plan. This is our demographic information, I won't review it with you, I'm sure that you've seen it in my presentation. The next slide is based on an update from our two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school improvement goals. We had seven of them last year, and they were part of a three-year plan, which we ended at the end of last year. And out of those sevens, there are two that we really did not meet. One, goal four was an implementation of a new schedule. Based on surveys, it was decided that we really didn't want to change our schedule, so we just left it. Goal five, the assessment of students related to their progress toward meeting the academic, social, and civic expectations. Based on our work for the accreditation, which we started in two thousand seventeen, we knew that the standards were changing, and that we would be moving towards maybe changing those expectations, so we really did not put any time into actually doing that. But we did pretty much meet all of the other goals. We still work in goal one with an interdisciplinary steering committee. That is annual, we have a group that meets three times during the year. They invite all staff, any staff who wants to participate on the committee work, and they do write lesson plans that are interdisciplinary, and they do implement those plans. We do have priority standards, or have used priority standards in our observation and evaluations of teachers that we determined three years ago, and we did use them in our evaluation over the last three years. We did increase participation on the senior internship program to a hundred percent last year, and we will continue to do that. We do provide collaboration time for teachers during our interdisciplinary block, where they're allowed to send their students to the CAF, so that one of us, one of the administrators can monitor the students while they do some common planning, whether it's around writing common assessments, or just looking at student work. And we will continue to implement our version of PBIS through our advisory program, which we started last year. So, our first goal is around student learning, trying to match the goals of the strategic plan, and the school. And the school improvement plan for the high school also has to include our priority areas of growth from our NIESC report. So you'll see that I've tried to identify the action steps that actually will meet the priority areas as we continue our school improvement over the next two years, based on that report. So our first goal is to develop curriculum apps using the understanding by design template for assessment, which is a stage two of the mapping project, and instructional strategies, which is a stage three of that project for every course and every department. We are working on a vision of the graduate so that these assessment strategies and instructional strategies will be informed by that vision. We're still working on that. We have five action steps related to this goal. The first one is to develop the vision of the graduate, and that will address the priority area one from our report. The next actions, the next two action steps actually involve writing stage two and writing stage three of the mapping. It will be a two-year project. We are addressing the priority area two from our NIESC report, and we're hoping to have the core subjects for our graduation requirements done by June of 2020 and then all the other subjects by June of 2021. And there are a number of things we'd like to address in both stages, and I think I have that in the, um, plan, in the action steps. We have some data from the report, from the NIESC report, and these are things, again, we're trying to address by completing the, the mapping. That's stage three. In order to address some of the priority areas, I did have to include them in, in one of the three goals. And we are looking to provide a protocol for common planning time for teachers. That was one of the priority areas in our plan, and that is for priority area four. We do already provide it during interdisciplinary block, but we will also provide it during faculty meetings and also try to get a plan in place for planning blocks. And our, another, another action plan, again, trying to address priority growth three. We will implement a portfolio program, we have started that this year. Phase one is for our class of 2023, our freshmen. And stage one is simply completing a log of what they do during their interdisciplinary time. We plan on phase two and phase three coming in over the next two years, where students will collect evidence related to the vision of the graduate that we are working on. And stage three, or phase three of this, will be for them to write reflections based on their progress towards meeting the skills. We also have, well, actually, phase four, which that would be the actual, the internship will be their phase four. So during their senior year will be their preparation for the internship. So that would be their portfolio over the four years. Goal two is around social, emotional learning, based on the strategic plan, to provide and expand upon services that meet the personal, social, emotional, academic, career, and college counseling needs of all students as a mean to foster civic engagement, social responsibility, and personal and emotional wellbeing. The first action step, sorry, first action step would be to continue our advisory program. We're in our second year. Advisory right now is two times per month for fifteen minutes. And we have different, last year, we did a whole school advisory. So every advisory session, everyone did the same thing, everyone worked on the same project or the same initiative. This year, we are trying to make it more grade-level centered. And that also will meet priority area three of our NIESC. We are also looking to develop a school counseling curriculum. We do have a curriculum, the school counselors do have a curriculum, but we are looking to implement that curriculum within our, all our curriculum areas, starting with our health curriculum. So the councils have met with health teachers and they have determined what topics they can integrate into the health curriculum, so they will co-teach during second semester with the health teachers. We are going to try to pilot that as well with other curriculum area teachers based on voluntary participation. And that is meeting our NIESC priority area five. Also to meet that priority area five, we are working on implementing a coordinated system of support for students who are returning from extended absences based on academic and social, emotional needs. Right now, we are just in the process of that structuring that, that program. We do call it transitional support services, so we have a title for it. We do have it partially staffed, but we're looking to fully staff it next year. We do have students that are working with the clinician in that program. We have a point four clinician through a grant, and we do have students that are working with that clinician. We are looking for an academic coordinator for that program. Right now, our school counselors take charge of the academic coordination for those students. And our action step, we are developing, this is actually part of our curriculum work that we're doing from goal one for stage two and stage three, but we're looking to design strategies and activities which integrate social, emotional skills into instruction for all curriculum areas. And that will be, I guess, they will work on that, all, the coursework will be done when they do work with stages two and three of the curriculum mapping. Our third goal around family and community engagement is to foster an inclusive culture by improving family engagement, building community connections, and developing a communication protocol which highlights and celebrates the Wilmington High School learning community. We do plan on hosting quarterly parent evenings to inform and engage families. We have done this in the past, and we do offer different sessions for parents to come in. They may want to learn about the National Honor Society, or they may want to see a session on social, emotional learning strategies. But we have offered this in the past and we hope to continue that this year. Our next action step is to continue to increase our community partnerships by continuing our senior exploration program. And we are doing that by ho- hosting a career fair that will take place next week on October thirtieth. And we also would like to host some other community events throughout the year. This, again, is a priority area three from our NIESC report. And the last action step is to develop a communication protocol that highlights events at Wilmington High School. It's not just events, we would like to highlight learning at Wilmington High School, so we'd like to work on having some type of expo of learning at some point. I don't know what that will look like, but that's in the planning stages. That's our plan.
Questions about this school improvement plan?
Actually, I had a question.
Sure.
On the, I guess it's goal number one, one of the steps, in reference to the common planning time. It says, by June of 2020, all teachers will have engaged in at least five common planning time activities. Is that like five different types of things that they're doing during that common planning time, or is it like?
No, five, five actual times that they can, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, sure.
Should we move on?
Yeah, no, I think you did that.
And so it's not listed on our, on the info sheet, but we do need an approval for this school improvement. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Sumaha, seconded by Mr. Feneli, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you should be awesome.
So I'm, I'm just going to present, I know you have a thirty-seven-page report, and I've condensed it quite a bit. So I'll, I'll review a little bit of the summary. The self-reflection report is what we completed last February, March, and sent it to the commission before they came out in April to actually spend two days here and write their report based on what they saw. So we did the report over eighteen months. We actually began our work in September of 2017 because we were being faced with new standards. So we had to look at those standards. Every standard, there are five of them, and each standard has a number of principles attached to them. Some have five, some have six, some have seven. And we had to address each one of those principles and write a report on that and also provide evidence in that report. So that took us quite a bit of time. The fac-, whole faculty was involved. And so they came and wrote their report over the two days when they met with the central office staff. They met with the administration, they met with teachers, they met with parents, they met with students. And they visited classrooms, so they wrote a report based on those standards and what they saw. And the standards are all around student learning. The first standard is around learning culture. And what they looked for was a safe learning environment and how students felt in the school around their culture of learning. I think they were very happy with what they saw. The vision of the graduate is a part of standard one, and we did not have one at the time. So that is a priority from standard one to meet that part. We need to write the vision of the graduate. We've done a lot of work on that, and we hope to get that done by the end of January. Standard two is on student learning, which is around the practices. And a lot of it is around our curriculum and having an articulated curriculum in the same format for all courses, which we really don't have, because we started the project several years ago and we just have not completed it, because there are three stages. We are through just about ninety-five percent of stage one, but we still need to work on stages two and three, and again, that was part of our plan. So they did note that we weren't ready with that, but they did see a lot of what they wanted to see in terms of instruction and in terms of curriculum work through their observations. You know, they did note that we do, they do see some traditional classrooms and they would like to see some less traditional classrooms. So there's a priority for us to work on in professional development that we need there. Standard three is on professional practices. And this is more of what we see and what we're doing in our classrooms. And again, I think that the collaboration that the staff were, was involved with in terms of the self-study really did, was something that they enjoyed doing and want more of. They do want more collaboration time, and that's where this standard actually focused. Standards four and standard five, both of them are around supports and resources. And they were very highly commended, both standard four and standard five, for the learning support. They felt that our interventions to help students, the accommodations that we make, the different programs that we have, were, were highly recommend, highly commended. And also, the learning resources around the building, the finances, the funding, and what we offer students in terms of extracurricular athletics, those are also highly commended. The, part of the report that we did address, and these are actually areas that we chose. These were not chosen by the team. We chose these areas as areas of growth based on our self-reflection. This is where we saw that we needed to work on. And the first one is to develop the vision of the graduate. The second one is to complete the writing of our curriculum. And the third one is to develop more civic engagement and social and personal responsibility of students at Wilmington High School. And I think that part of their recommendation in their report on this was to continue the internship program and enhance it. They also were very pleased with some of the things that we do with DECA as being a, a good way to get into working with civic engagement. So I think that they would like us to continue with that. That is our priority, priority area of growth is to continue with that program. We did have success with it and we want to continue with it and even make it more successful. Our fourth priority area of growth was to provide more common planning time, more time for teachers to work together, whether it's teachers in the same department or inter-departementally. They did enjoy the work that they do inter-departementally. Our first two faculty meetings, we spent about forty minutes of that, that kind of time where they worked together. They had a focus. And it was around the vision of the graduate, but they did work together and they did enjoy that work. And our last prior area, priority area is to increase opportunities for our guidance department to address student needs during a structured block. This is where we would like to have our guidance or our school counselors actually work within the classroom to incorporate their curriculum into our curriculum where they see it matches. And those are our areas of growth. We had many commendations and many recommendations. The commendations, the summary is that they were very impressed with their teachers' dedication and commitment to our students. They did appreciate our new endeavors and were, felt that they were successful and did want us to continue with them. They did find instructional practices effective in various, they, they were complimentary around the intervention strategies that we provided at the high school and the productive relationships that are forged among staff and students and families. They were, a lot of statements of praise around the beautiful building, health services, the maintained building, the commitment to support extracurricular activities, and our safety protocols. And the recommendations were around instruction and assessment as needing improvement, looking at instructional methodology that ensure that all learners engage in inquiry, problem-solving, and higher-order thinking skills. Research-based instruction and project-based learning was also something that they felt that we should develop. Assessment strategies and assessment practices, they felt that we needed some professional development or wanted professional development around that. And there was a recommendation that, again, educators be provided time to engage in collaboration and also professional development. That's it, that's thirty-seven pages.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Mr. Sumaha?
I just want to say that all of this stuff, it's a lot of really, really good work. And it's really, I, I can tell that it's a lot of thought. And, you know, sort of, the words escaping me right now, but, you know, a lot of thought and effort put into it, real. I'm, I was impressed with the, with the plan and the, the NIESC report, too. I think had some really good things in it, so I'm pretty happy with it. And I think you're focusing on, on your, the priorities. I think those are, make a lot of sense, so I just want to say, nice job.
Thank you.
I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Rexton?
In, in the standard two, in the student learning standard, so one of the, one of the things that you noted that they had talked about was the, that we were only in the first stage of the curriculum, of the curriculum work, of those, of those different phases. But the, the other point that they noted was this idea of sort of like deep learning occurring in pockets, but not consistently throughout the rooms that they've- in pockets but not consistently throughout the rooms that they visited, and that's kind of a major theme at the state level now, one of Commissioner O'Reilly's main kind of goals going forward for Massachusetts, to encourage the incentives and ability of schools to provide that kind of like deeper, more engaged, you know, project-based, really engaging with the material, looking at higher-order critical thinking skills. And so, not necessarily, there's a whole special, like the kaleidoscope collective that is being started, but I was wondering in general if we have opportunities to leverage some of that work going on at the state level to look at opportunities to do that in our classrooms as well.
Well, we did attend a workshop a couple of weeks ago on the vision of the graduate, and that really was, the focus was deep learning. So I think that our work on the vision of the graduate, the rubrics and the assessments that we create to assess the skills that we feel are part of that vision, I think will increase that deep learning. I think there needs to be professional development. That's something that I have talked to Dr. Regan about. We're looking for project-based learning opportunities. There are a lot that are offered. There are a lot of workshops that are offered, but they're one-day workshops. We're looking to really develop this as something that everybody can participate in for a few years, actually.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Any questions?
No, not a question, but thank you. Ms. Peters as well, this is a laborious process, the NEAS accreditation. You see in the cover memo that this is a journey that has started but will continue through until 2021. Ms. Peters was reminding me earlier today about the budgetary need to factor in that will be part of the budget planning, and this has to be sustained, and this is an effort that, I know with her leadership, she will do so with her leadership team and her staff. But thank you for all of the work that you've put into this, and that's still to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to 6F, first reading of revised school committee policies. Are you ready? So Mr. Ragsdale and I will take you through this, but you have the notes before you indicating what has changed, so I think we'll kind of just go quickly unless there's something specific that you want to discuss or you have a question about.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start with BDE. Questions, concerns? This is subcommittees of the school committee. Okay. All right. Mrs. Brown, I'm going to wait for you because I know you're also taking notes for us, so I'm sorry.
No, I think, thank you. I do have a question on BDE.
Okay.
As it applies to bullet number two, which I think is contradictory language to what we have in our school committee handbook. I think our handbook reads that the subcommittees, the senior member of the board would be chair of the subcommittees, and so it doesn't speak to the appointment by the chair. So I didn't know, I particularly liked that language in our handbook more than per se this, but I don't know if there was a broader reasoning behind it, so.
So we don't know, and I'm not sure, I see there's a legal reference, I'm not sure where, if it's, that's just MASC language or if that's the legal reference, so I think we'd need to look into that.
We, I can, certainly.
But you're right, you're absolutely right, it's not how we've done it. I also noticed, I know we've been changing chairperson to chair, so that didn't seem to make it into this version, and I'm not sure if we just missed it or if it just didn't make it into here, so assume that whenever you see chairperson, it's just chair. Okay, so why don't we, we'll take a look at that and just make sure that it's not part of the legal ref, does that make sense? Unless you know, you don't.
No.
Okay, so we're going to move on from BDE, and we'll go to BDF.
I imagine that's, I doubt that's in the legal ref.
I agree.
The only other thing that I wanted to comment on was if the board does decide to go with the chair appointing, that may be the better, something for the consideration of the board. Having the chair appoint the chair of the subcommittee may be more in line because if you have two members who are elected in the same year serving on that subcommittee, not that we've ever had an issue to my understanding, but someone would have to choose who wants to drive the bus, so that may be where that comes into play.
Okay.
And I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll just revisit that and we'll bring that one back next time. BDF, there are no changes, but it doesn't mean that you don't want to make a change, so if there's anything that struck you, seeing none, I'll move on. Brings us to BDFA, school councils. Again, no changes, we're recommended, we were in line, we just have the review date at the bottom. Yeah.
Just clarification, school councils, what are they, are they different? I'm just, no, you're, do you clarify what school councils are referenced to?
School council is the term the Department of Education uses for the advisory council.
Advisory, so SAC. Thank you. Thank you.
Several parents serving on the committees and they work with the principal.
Oh, I've sat on SAC. I just, I wasn't sure if that was in line with that, or if it had something.
It seems to be that we tend to have used that word advisory here in Wilmington sometimes, but it is, there are school councils is the formal.
I think that's the language in the law because that's a.
The advisory council?
The school council.
School council.
I think is the language in the law because it's a legal requirement to have them.
So, question, is there any legal reason why we couldn't enhance our policy to read school advisory councils? We're not taking away from the law, we're only kind of adding an enhancement to, I just, I throw that out there for just.
If I may, I mean, I think that may, my only thought is that it might get confusing with, there's actually a fairly full body of guidance that the department has issued that includes the term school councils around composition, meetings and such, so it may get.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand where that, where it becomes tricky.
Well.
We have to have them, yes?
We do, yes, indeed, we do. If we, well, it's a reference point, but referring to them as SAC, I mean.
I'm saying that referring to it as school advisory councils.
What I think is that if it's referred to as school council in other documents, then school advisory councils may not realize that they're actually the school councils, so we probably should talk more about changing school advisory councils to just school councils.
Oh, okay.
There'll be other things coming out that say your school council should, and we're going to be like, oh, we don't have that, and then we do. So I think we're trying to just keep it tight and connected to what is on its way out to us. So we probably should at some point look at our SACs and change it to school council, I'm guessing, but that's not for now because we're just focusing on.
Thank you very much.
Not going off on a tangent. All right, thank you, those are great questions. That brings us to BDFA-E-1, school improvement plan. And so you see MASC model policy shifts the approval of the school improvement plans from the school committee to the superintendent. The policy subcommittee recommends adding this policy as written by MASC, but this is a significant change, so thoughts? Just trying to be fair.
No, please do. Please do.
Mrs. Burns.
I just want to say that I'm not a big fan of this. I know this is a law that was handed down almost a decade ago because I looked into it, but just for the record, I think taking this aspect away is, I think, I don't want to say detrimental because I think that's too strong of a word, but since school committees are the driving budgetary authority in providing, you know, in approving curriculum and programming, doing the strategic plan and policy, I think removing the school improvement plans, not removing the work or the work that the administrators and staff do, which is very vital and important, but to remove that authority from the boards in that light, I just think it doesn't make sense per se. I mean, we still hold the superintendent accountable, and I just don't think that there's a, I don't know, like, I don't, this is not the right term, but a fair balance with regards to school committee input and suggestions and, you know, that aspect. I mean, I do think because of what we do have jurisdiction over, I think this kind of ties into that and how we make our decisions towards that and not being able to have a little more point to it. I mean, I don't want to say this in a mistrustful way because I don't want it coming up in the wrong way, but I just think that school committees should have a weighing opinion upon the advice and guidance of the superintendent as it pertains to these plans. So I'm hoping, I know that MASC is lobbying to get this back to school committees authority, under school committee authority, but I just wanted to state that for whatever, you know.
Other thoughts on that? So here it reads, "This plan shall be written with the advice of the school council," though there it is again, the school council, that's the school advisory council, "and submitted for approval to the superintendent and review of the school committee." Other thoughts? Mrs. Newhouse, you're okay with that? Okay. Anybody else feel similarly to Mrs. Burns on?
I mean, as I read it, it says the approval, the superintendent approves it, but the school committee does review it. So there is, like, there still is a lot of say, I think, that a school committee would have, but it would be up to the superintendent to approve it, and I think.
So the aspect is, is that since we're the authority on budgetary and strategic plan and meeting those goals, I mean, for instance, there's, you know, if we had recommendations, they could or could not necessarily be considered depending, you know? Not to say that we're, you know, the guiding force because I think that that power is with the superintendent, but I do think that as a body it shows support of the plans that our schools do put forth, as well as the support towards making sure the programming and the work that goes behind those goals are financially viable, but, you know, that, you know, I just, I just think that, you know, it's expenditures, public money expenditures that go into these programs and to these goals, I just think that it really does tie back to school committee authority. It's not a big thing I'm not going to hang my hat on, but I just, I just wanted to give an opinion to it.
I agree, I hear what you're saying, but I think the review piece is when we still are doing all of that, we're not working with the leadership, with the principals to work on, whereas the superintendent is doing that work with the principals to work, to do it together, whereas I feel like then we're really a review board, not necessarily involved in the approval process. So I was in favor of moving to this language, but any other?
I think legally we have to because I think it's the law.
The language of the law says that the plan shall be submitted to the superintendent who shall review and approve the plan after consultation with the school committee.
Right, so it is a law, so there's no.
Yeah, so that's a legal requirement, but it's, and I think it clearly envisions school committee, you know, again, consultation, that this doesn't happen until after consultation with the school committee, so even though it's not officially under school committee like vote and authority, that I think that the intention is that we're still involved.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We actually, so Mr. Ragsdale and I, we talked a little bit about the date on here, so minor language edits to indicate principal submits the SIP to superintendent for approval and to the school committee for review. In the first paragraph, change an approval annually to no later than July 1 of the year in which the plan is to be implemented. There was some discussion about changing July 1 to an earlier date. This will be discussed with the full committee in the second paragraph. So the idea was if it's, so backing up, so now we're getting the school improvement plans in the fall, but the idea would be that we would actually be getting them, we could get them in the spring before the year starts, but the July 1, that doesn't help us with, do you want to add?
All right, I'll just add, just for context, if not anything else, so just keeping in mind where you might land with this date, I think it's an important piece. So we've, in the last couple of years, maybe been a little bit off track, but I believe, and I would suggest that generally speaking, what you would find is that the school councils come together and are formed in the fall, right? And that school council, again, is representative of, obviously, parents' guardians in each school, so that council will form sometime in the fall. Realistically, it's not going to be the first week of school, but call it around October 1st. But that school council's job is to work in concert with the principal to develop the school improvement goals that then come to fruition in the school improvement plan. That's how it should work, that's how the law, in fact, speaks to it. So from a timing standpoint, just keeping in mind that if I'm a principal and I'm going to work in concert with my school council, I'm going to be working towards developing and refining a school improvement plan to finalize by the end of the school year. That will be based upon a review of data, feedback, what have you, over the course of the year. Just from a timing standpoint, one school thought here might be that as long as the plan is completed by the school council, by the end of the school year, it then comes forward and is presented to the school committee. From a timing standpoint, if you wanted to logistically actually fit those presentations in, and you're going to back that up from the end of the school calendar, we have eight schools, that's a little bit of a worry that I might have is to be jamming those in and respectively cramming those in, you know, which is in May, which means those plans are done at the end of, like, April. So a little bit of tension there on the timing. That's just something to be thinking about when you're going to finalize this.
Mrs. Burns.
So, I'm not, I'm absolutely not against that idea, I think it makes a lot of, you know, it's pretty rational. My only question is, is will the results of the previous year goals be available prior to the proposed school improvement goals for the upcoming year, so that we could see that consistency from, you know, will it be done at that point, kind of thing?
Well, that's the thing, right? So you're really talking about a plan that, in this particular case, if I was working with my council, it would be if you were incorporating, for example, the MCAS data, right? You're formulating the plan for next year that's based upon the MCAS data from the year previous. I mean, there's sort of no escaping that, though. If MCAS is an example, obviously there's other data and information that you, or a school council could be using to generate the plan for the following year, but.
It's just seeing measurable outcomes by that point so that it's a smooth transition as, okay, now I understand where they're going with the, that's the only, to have goals is great by not knowing what the outcomes are, they're, just kind of make it, makes it a little gray.
Any other comments? Mr. Smaha?
So is the, does MASC, do they recommend the July 1st? That's what their recommendation is?
That's what they recommend.
That's in the law. The law says July. Yeah, the law says no later than July 1st of the year the plan is to go into effect.
So no later than, so.
Right, so it has to be, it has to be done legally before then.
And so if I just, so, right, that these plans, ideally, if we're cycling appropriately through, are, one way to think about this is, like we're sort of seeing this year, that these plans effectively are finalized by the end of June, school goes into recess, and then in the fall, we start with these presentations like we've been doing. It's not a perfect alignment, but.
I mean, I'm fine with that language if everyone else is. There's no legal reference here, should there be a legal reference?
Yeah, there really shouldn't be.
And there's not an MASC either. There's also no legal reference on MASC's handbook for school improvement plan, so we might want, I don't know if we want to check that.
I can give you the.
Thanks. And you'll also notice it should say source MASC at the bottom there, I apologize, I'm not sure, that got missed, so that will be inserted. Do you have yours? Do you have that on yours?
No.
Okay, just, I see the reviewed, but I don't see source MASC, so we'll just have to add that. And we'll look into those legal reps, I don't know. Okay. Next you have BDFA. Okay. Next, you have BDFAE three. This had no changes. Did you have something? Okay, moving right along. School Community Association Parent Advisory Councils, BDFB, which is not in your notes. And it is actually not an MASC. This is, this is specific to, to us. So we didn't recommend, be recommended keeping it here and as is, yep.
On the front, it says BDFA, and then?
Oh, it does.
It's got the same title.
Yep.
I'm sorry?
You're right.
On the summary, it says BDFA, and the words under?
Oh, but that's just incorrect. I'm sorry. Yep, so it's BDFB. Still, and it's still not listed in the MASC.
Just pointing out.
That piece, okay.
Do you see? So it's BD, it's here. It's the same thing. Thank you very much, Mr. Regerio. All right, next is BDG, School Attorney. You can take a look at those notes. It's really just a shifting to match the MASC handbook, and then changing to the non-gender specific pronouns. All right. Brings us to BE, School Committee Meetings. And just the sources and the legal refs there. Stop me from going too quickly. Okay. Sorry, Mrs. Burns, too fast?
No, don't worry. Thank you very much.
BEC?
Can I, I apologize. Just a question. On BDG, it says shift the first two paragraphs to the bottom. They only see one paragraph shifted to the bottom. Is the other one missing? The one that starts, however, the complexity. Should that be down below, too?
No, we must, we think we just deleted that. I'm sorry, yep. Thank you. And BEC?
BEC.
BEC, Executive Session. So you can see the changes, chairperson to chair. Questions? Good. And that brings us to BEDA. Notification, no changes recommended. BEDB is Agenda Format. And then it brings us to BEBD-E, Agenda Format. And this looks like a lot more than it really is. So, Mrs. Burns?
Just confused by it. I understand it as to how it applies to how we create the agenda and our items, but the language is different from what we use on our agenda, so I think I would, for consistency, I think I'd like to see our
Our own agenda.
Our own terms used in these places, and I mean, I know that we use this student representative report, so, I mean, if we can customize it to reflect as to how we, those terms that we use on our agenda when applicable, I think, would make more sense and more clarity. Bring more clarity to the policy itself.
So literally, just to update this, for example, roll call instead of call to order, as an example?
Yes.
Okay, we can do that. We'll bring this back.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll see, so we, in our, our old policy didn't do it the way we do it either. But we'll fix that.
So I'm glad you're reviewing it. I know I am.
Thank you. So we'll bring this one back. BEDB-E. We'll bring it back next time. We'll work on that. Oh.
Just quickly, if we do keep this number four, there's a typo.
I see that. Amen. Yep.
But I, I mean, I imagine that that's going away to follow what our agenda looks like anyways, but just
Thank you.
To be mindful of that.
Is that it?
That's it. We got it.
Okay. So can we still move to approve the first reading?
Can I ask you a question? It's not been my experience to ever needing to approve first readings, although, you know, as to go through it, it's, so I just didn't know, I'm just, I'm looking for clarity is simply it.
I think we have, I think we have to acknowledge with a vote that we've completed the first reading, if I remember that.
Okay, only because I, that's fine. That's perfectly fine. I defer to you. I just, because I've, we've done it in the past, so.
This has come up, and I, I will admit, I'm not 100% certain of the answer. My understanding from Tristan is that typically, as a board, this is how, in the recent past, anyway, you have approached first readings. That is to say, to take an action to approve it. I, I don't know the law well.
Considering it's a recorded, oh, excuse me.
I would be surprised if we had to, like, now, that you say that, because there really is no action that we're taking. I mean, it's, the first reading is really just review.
It's brought forth in public, and it's recorded, so, but it's, I mean, I defer to, I just defer, I just was curious, because it was
I'm not 100%, I'm not, it's here, so I'm just following.
No worries. No, absolutely.
Just following the recommended motion, but we'll look into that.
Let's do it to be safe.
We'll do it now to be safe, but I think.
Look into it further.
Well, we just looked at this, we looked at a policy this evening in the, in our subcommittee about first reads, second, or so. I'm trying to, like, but, so we'll, we'll come back to that.
And I just might learn bad practices, so please, you know.
Mr. Regerio is like, no.
I'll offer a motion to oppose.
Can you make the real motion to approve?
I, I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Burns, all in favor? Thank you. And thank you very much to the subcommittee. Mr. Ragstil and, and Dr. Brandon, and Dr. Regan, and myself, and Mr. Fennelly, who stepped in this evening, and
Yes, I don't thank you. I might make it worse for you guys.
So, no, so it's really, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of good work, and I'm excited to be moving through it so quickly, so thank you very much. Do you have something else? And that brings us to six G, the continuation of the MASC resolutions. Mrs. Burns, can you bring us through?
Thank you. We're on number six of the resolution, Universal Quality Pre-K and Kindergarten Access. Just a moment, I'm sorry. Okay, the rationale, this resolution would help ensure that our underserved population of three and four-year-olds will be provided with the supports and services necessary for school readiness and lasting success in the classroom and for future success. Knowing that these strategies are documented in increasing student success, our resolution will level the playing field by helping to ensure equity and beginning the process of closing the achievement gap for this vulnerable cohort of children. So some back history, for the past several years, Framingham School Committee, which is also bringing it forth again for this year, has consistently brought this piece forth with regards to opening up early pre-K services to a lot of their socially economically challenged families with children for a variety of reasons, but most importantly, to get the children in and starting with their education process, their social skills, and a variety of other aspects. It, it really speaks to, I think, a lot of, and it's just my opinion, a lot of districts, large districts that have a lot, a huge immigration, low-income family. And it's, and I think it's, it's well-served if we support this, because I think early education is driving this piece as well, Department of Early Ed, in seeing the need to start, to start these children out young in pre-K and kindergarten services. And so I would recommend approving and supporting this resolution.
Discussion?
Can I ask a question to Mr. Regerio? The Therefore Be It Resolved piece says, MASC will file a support legislation that will provide a sufficient appropriation for this. So in your best guess, would you think that this would impact the district financially in one way or the other? Or it might understand that the state legislature would essentially appropriate the funds to make this happen in the district?
When kindergarten started, we did have a grant for that, and this might be similar, that there's a grant for a integrated preschool program. We do have integrated preschool programs here, but it'll be additional funding to, whether expanded, we do have a certain number of students on waiting lists at both the Ballwell and Wildwood, so that's, that's, I'm guessing, probably how it would work.
I also believe, this also speaks to a lot of the home daycare settings. There's a big surge at the early education level to try to increase opportunity for early education staff to get stronger professional development. The state's finding it's been difficult because they're usually, they're usually working, so making it very difficult. So it's trying to increase the access, not only within the public school system, but within other pre-K and early education, daycare center, I don't want to say daycare centers, but, because they've taken on more, it's become such, so much more than just babysitting. It is really the, the first steps in primary colors and learning the letters. So it's, this would speak to supporting, which is much needed, those type of centers, and the creation of those type of centers to meet the need, to meet the need of these children, so that helps.
All in favor of supporting this resolution? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Resolution seven speaks to poverty in children. Rational is, this resolution will help ensure that our underserved population of schoolchildren will be provided with the supports and services necessary for lasting success in the classroom and in the future, in their future. Knowing that by eliminating the ravages of poverty, three, these strategies have been proven to increase positive student outcomes, this resolution will level the playing field by helping to ensure equity and to close the achievement gap for this vulnerable cohort. So as you read through the Therefore Be It Resolved, I think this is basically just support for eradicating childhood poverty in order to, for children to be their, to succeed, to be their very best in learning. So I would, I would support this resolution.
Mr. Smaha?
I want to just point out one of the, one of the wherethes, wherethes in here. It says, there's a direct link between poverty and student and district academic performance. I think that's a really powerful statement. I'm in 100% agreement with it personally. So I, you know, fully, 100% support this resolution.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of supporting Resolution seven? That's unanimous. Resolution eight?
Eight. Resolution for Access to Menstrual Supplies. Rational is, proponents assert that menstrual supplies are basic necessities which some students may not have on hand in school at any particular moment, or may not be able to afford in general. Their view, they view these items similar to other products found in nurses' offices or in restrooms as basic, essential commodities for everyday use that should be available to all students without charge. I got to be honest with you, I'm not sure as to how to approach this resolution, per se. Because I know back in the day, there were little machines set up in the ladies' room that were usually broken, destroyed, you know, or broken into, and I think that's kind of gone to a point where I know, I don't know, within our districts, that the nurse's office would be the go-to place if, you know, ladies were caught surprised, and so I just didn't know if there was, I don't know if there's any other, other effects to this resolution. So I'm really, it's not a bad thing, but it's, I just don't know.
I would say regardless of how, how the system is rolled out, or what the mechanics of it are, I think the, I think this is worth supporting.
Can I ask, do we, do the nurses currently have supplies that they dispense as requested, as, as needed?
I'm not certain.
Okay.
I'd only be speculating. I believe I know the answer, and I believe that, but I would only speculate. I can find out for sure. I know it doesn't help in the moment here, but, sorry.
Oh, no worries, but I should have been proactive and asked you.
All in favor of supporting Resolution eight? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Resolution nine, Charter School Reform. Rational, this resolution addresses several areas where charter school critics note that school districts are disadvantaged by current policy. Among these issues are failure to recruit and retain a fair proportion of students at risk, English language learners, or clients of special education services. The resolution also recommends that charter schools should be funded as a, as a discrete budget line item, rather than by having sending district Chapter 70 funding diverted to charter schools, and that the current mitigation program to offset temporary losses of district funds be fully funded. Critics of this resolution may argue that the money follows the child and that charter schools represent choices for parents and students. They might also cite efforts by some charter schools to recruit students at risk. I just want to say, I certainly support this resolution wholeheartedly.
I support this as well.
I do.
Discussion?
I think the only part of this that gives me hesitancy is the, of the resolution, the fourth point, that requirement that all charter schools be funded in full by the Commonwealth, rather than by expropriation of Chapter 70 education aid. I, I agree in general with the thrust of this, of this resolution, because I think that there does need to be some reckoning of how charter schools are funded, and, you know, right now, generally, the way that the regulations are written, that the, you know, when the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education approves a charter, that they don't, they're basically not allowed to take any consideration of what impact it will have on the district in which the, you know, the school is located, or which, the districts that it draws students from, which, which I do have a problem with. I think that that, this is probably just too much and unrealistic to, and unreasonable to say that charter schools should simply be state-funded, and not any part of the taxpayer, you know, just the communities, or the, the funding from the students who are, who are attending them should be part of, part of the, of the funding mechanism for them. I think that that's maybe a step, a step to, a step beyond where I think it would reasonably go. So I don't know if I would support maybe an amendment to the resolution. Sure, what's your, what's your thought on that?
In response, I can, I can totally see your point of view, and yes, and it may be a little unrealistic, but speaking to the fact that currently charter schools, the money does, forgive the generalization, the money does follow the child out of the, the school district budget or Chapter 70. But at this time, the, they're comprised of board members that aren't represented by the municipalities that are sending students. So I think until we can reform the charter school piece with creating similar to what we have with our collaborative schools, where there is a representative, a representative from each sending school district, because these are public monies going to a charter school, which creates waitlist, they, they don't fall under the same waitlist, they don't fall under the same obligations as public schools. And as we've learned eight years ago in the city of Gloucester, we had a charter school close abruptly on a Friday, and so the Gloucester Public Schools had a deluge of students coming in mid-year to back to public schools, because they didn't have a school to go to on Monday. I do think that with this, I think it's all tied in together. I don't think it's just a one-note thing, but I think with these charter schools, there should be a reform in place to have representation of, on the board of charter schools of the sending municipalities, however they want to do it. But I think that's, that would be my kind of, you know, stick of the mud. I don't mind sending, you know, having money from our municipal, you know, from our budget going and following these students to these charter schools, but there's no accountability right now with where, what these public monies are being used for. And they don't serve all students, per se. And, you know, I, you know, it's a long conversation. I just want to be smart with time. But I think that's kind of where I stand on that, until we have representation or there's accountability to our communities and, you know, to our taxpayers with these charter schools. I just, I know the length, you know, I understand, you know, I just think that that needs to be in place before we can consider that, you know, I mean, that leverage piece. I understand it may be unrealistic.
I just think that if you look at the rest of this list as far as being a legislative agenda, that these are all, I think, reasonable things that you could probably get some support behind, but that number four is just basically a non-starter. And that, I mean, I know this isn't a piece of legislation, it's just a resolution for MASC to go forward.
Right. But it's a starting place, though, too. And it, it doesn't mean that, you know, that with that discussion, there's a bigger discussion that would have to be, take place in the legislature, in the state house level. But I'm just, it's a starting place. And until, again, the representation piece is spoken to, I kind of, I think it's a starting place, simply that. But I defer to everybody else's.
Is there any other discussion? Do you want to suggest an amendment, or you want to suggest that that's removed?
I don't know if there'll be any more appetite on the committee for it, but, well, we'll just see that.
Make a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution nine with the deletion, with the recommended amendment to the resolution to delete number four, whatever we call that, part four of the...
Give me just a moment. Will you write this down appropriately? Motion, recommended to...
This motion may go down in flames without a second, but...
Just a moment. We'll get this down to approve. Resolution nine. With deletion. Number four. Okay. Thank you.
Is there a second? Okay.
I think that means the motion fails.
I really wanted to offer a second, just because she wrote so much down.
All in favor of supporting Resolution nine? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Now, just some housework. There's proposals to amend the MASC bylaws. I won't go through them in detail, but I will highlight what areas will be changed. I have them before you, the details of it. The first proposed amendment to the MASC bylaws, the Board of Directors of the Association has recommended to members that the, okay, it is proposed that Article seven, Election of Officers, Section two, Nominating Committee, be updated to reflect the addition of the Minority Caucus representative on the Board of Directors and as a representative on the nominating committee. Just to let you know, I think it's two or three years now, there was a new creation of a MASC Minority Caucus was created to represent the diverse committee members throughout the Commonwealth. And so they have taken on, have become stronger over the past year or two since forming. And it's just spreading, you know, spreading themselves into these other areas of the work the Board of Directors do. So would you like me to read the current language as opposed to the proposed, or should I just read the proposed language? I'm just trying to be efficient.
I think just the proposed is fine, yeah.
Okay. So the proposed language reads as follows. A nominating committee of ten persons shall be appointed by the President with the advice and consent of the Board of Directors on or before May 1st of each year. A past president shall serve as a non-voting chair of the committee. Five members shall be division officers, and five shall be members of the school committees, which are active members of the Association. The five division officers and the five others shall be appointed, shall be so appointed that each division of the Association is represented.
Thank you.
Sure.
Discussion? Okay. Thank you very, very much, Mrs. Burns.
Thank you.
For doing that and taking notes all at the same time. It's very impressive. Thank you.
So are we voting for this change of language?
Oh, sorry. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Burns, is there a second? Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. It brings us to public comments. Seeing none, moving on. Other reports, any Subcommittee reports? I think we have a lengthy Policy Subcommittee report. I'm joking. Just kidding. Any other Subcommittee reports?
Can I just remind everybody again from the WEF Board that the walk is next Thursday, and hopefully, everybody can go and support it.
Yes, thank you. Do we have times on that yet?
I think they were going home to the schools today.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Correspondence?
Yes, I have something this evening from the Woburn Street School. It's from the students. Beautiful card. I love this. It simply reads, Dear Wilmington School Committee, on behalf of the Woburn Street School children who participated in our October 16th, 2019 Walking School Bus Wellness activity, we would like to extend our appreciation for your continued support with this wellness activity. We had a wonderful time. Thank you. And it lists all, hopefully, I think, all the students who participated. And I think it's just wonderful. It's very endearing. I love these cards.
Nice.
So, thank you. Very good. And that's for the segment. Thank you.
Okay. Some future School Committee dates and notable agenda items. I don't see 10/28 on here, but please mark your calendars. 10/28 is the Selectman Meeting. We call, is it a joint meeting? No, we're going, we're attending the Selectman Meeting. Okay. So that is the 28th, and that will be at 7:00.
And we're doing that at Town Hall?
Town Hall.
We're doing that at Town Hall. Then we have November 13th is our next School Committee meeting, and then we have two in December the 4th and the 18th. Last page of upcoming district events, and so we'll just quickly mention, tomorrow night is the grade eight high school open house here at the high school from 6:30 to 8:00. October 26th is the Pumpkin Fair at the Woburn Street School from 9:00 to 3:00. The 29th is the Halloween Dance. I think it's at the middle school. It says high school here, but I'm pretty sure it's the middle school.
It is.
Oh, it is, because it says 7:00-8:00 there. So that's at the Wilmington Middle School Cafeteria. October 31, as Mr. Fennelly just mentioned, we have the WEF walks, the elementary schools and the early childhood centers. November 5th, we have the Professional Development Day, so there is no school. November 11th, Veterans Day. November 12th through 14th, we have the Western Intermediate Book Fair, and that's all day. November 12th, we have Secret Lives of Teens and Tweens in the middle school auditorium. That's the correct location. Okay. And I think we just need one more motion. Mr. Ragsdale?
I'm going to join the meeting.
Mrs. Newhouse, thank you. Second, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Good night.